Just practicing.
I know.
Okay, we're recording and streaming to YouTube, Billy, maybe again.
This is the planning board meeting of August fourteenth. Thank you volunteers for your attendance and your service.
Well.
We got a board meeting of outside.
Hey, but that guy can do the job, I can leave. I will begin with a roll call. Rick?
Rick Smith member.
I call member.
Mincelite alternate.
Bill Spence member.
Catherine Brennan member.
John Racine member.
Rich Rita, select board ex officio.
Gonna be a one, two, three, four.
Morgan Dean member.
Rob Wilson. Morgan Dane member. Hello, Morgan. So we have seven.
Hello.
All right, I'd like to call the continuation of the public hearing of the Adventure Zone site application submitted by the Tyrell Development Company.
Mr. Chair.
Should I sit down then?
No, no, you're welcome to sit right, right where you are.
Rich, you raised your harp.
Yes, I would like to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest from discussion on this application. I will explain further when you discuss the, when the board discusses the application in detail. So I'm going to remove myself from, from the, the table. This is a select board decision and the select board will not have somebody representing it in the select board ex officio position for the continuation of this deliberation.
I would explain further. I've been informed by the select board ex officio to the planning board that he has recused himself on advice of counsel from the application deliberation. I will all ask Madam Vice Chairman to read the letter that has been addressed to the planning boards.
On August sixth, twenty twenty five, from Retita to Bill Spence and Mark Dakota, dear Phil, I'm writing you in your capacity as chair of the planning board, in my capacity as the select board officio member of the planning board. The select board has engaged legal counsel to review the four easements the town has with regard to the ice arena, as it has become concerned that the proposed development could interfere with these easement rights and because the developer applicant is the other party to these easements. The town is in short and of utter. On advice of counsel, from this point forward, I am accusing myself from any further planning board meetings and deliberations on the application. Counsel also advised that neither of the other two select board members replace me since they too would be faced with the same conflict of interest. Accordingly, the planning board will have to proceed on the application without a select board officio member. I will continue to participate as the select board officio member of the planning of the board on all other planning board matters. Regards, Rich.
So this means that the ex officio spot on the planning board can only be filled by another select board member. However, since all select board members are subject to the same recusal by the same conflict of interest, the planning board will proceed with six voters rather than seven. A board of six can make the planning board decision since four is a quorum. If there is a tied vote, it means that no decision has occurred and that the motion has failed. If you're interested, the reference is RSA six seventy-three, paragraph six, which says that the planning board is not required to fill a vacant seat as long as a quorum is met and the chair may leave the seat open under such circumstances. Rich, do you have anything further to say on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can explain further what the conflicts of interest are. I would like to turn it over to the select board town council to actually bring out all the details of the board.
Which I'm glad to do, is, is the public hearing starting?
The public hearing is open.
Okay.
Counselor, would you please come forward, tell us who you are and who you represent?
Excuse me. So my name's David LePiver, I'm an attorney with law firm Tarvel Brodich and the selectmen have retained me as outside counsel to represent them. As you indicated, as Mr. Rita indicated, the town is in butter. So I'm appearing on behalf of the selectmen in that capacity. As you know, the selectmen are responsible for the management of all the town's property and the property being the ice arena. The, the selectmen have four easements that encumber the applicant's property. I, I have a copy of the easement deed. I, I have zero expectation that the planning board members will review it, but I do want to provide a copy to the board for, for your record.
Okay, give it to Steve, yes.
So the selectmen are not appearing here, you know, in favor of the application. They're not appearing in opposition to the application. They really just want to make sure that the board gives due consideration when acting on the application to their easements. What we're asking for is that the, the board, the following be done. Number one, we think the easements should be delineated on, on the plans. I reviewed the plans and it's not clear to me that that is the case. So the town's easements should be delineated and shown on the plans. That would be number one. Number two, you know, the plan should contain an appropriate note that identifies the existence of the easements and obviously that the property is subject to the easements. And then number three, I, I don't know if the board typically uses a development agreement, but if there's a development agreement, we would like to see those things incorporated into the development agreement as well. Procedurally, because I understand that there's a, you're up against your, your, your deadline. The selectman would really like to see those plans revised prior to the board acting on the application. I mean, ideally, that's the way it should be. You know, if, if the applicant needs to provide the board with an extension, that would be what the selectmen would like to see. However, if the board is feeling compelled to act on the application sooner than later, what we would ask is that in the event of an approval, that any approval be subject to the condition precedent that the plans be revised to reflect all the issues that I'm talking about. And that is, you know, a term of art that the, and I would ask that the condition of approval be exactly that. It would be an express condition precedent subject to the plans being revised to reflect the easements. Okay, so the easements, there are four of them. There is an access easement and parking easement. There is a maintenance easement. There is an easement for ice and snow storage and then there is a drainage easement. My understanding is the drainage easement is not so much of an issue. The existing drainage features that are, that are existing on the property are, are fine. With regard to parking, the town has an easement to use that parking area that's on the westerly side of the structure on the easterly side of the road. It's, it's right there adjacent to the building. And that is a, a shared parking easement. Concern the selectmen have is that the concern has to do with either overburdening or exceeding the scope of the easement. So our understanding is that the applicant intends to utilize this shared parking area in addition to other shared parking area for its parking. And the selectmen's concern is that if that parking lot is overburdened, then it will not be able to utilize the parking that it's entitled to use pursuant to its easement. And so that, that's the, that's the first area of concern. I, I think it's something that's easily solvable. It probably requires a conversation between the applicant and the selectmen. Not necessarily something needs to happen in front of the board as far as those discussions are concerned. But that is the concern with the parking area. The maintenance area, as the board knows, that the ice arena is located to the very edge of the property that's owned by the town. And so there's a maintenance easement that goes around the outside of the property. And it also could be utilized for emergency services like a fire truck, that sort of thing. We really think that that maintenance area has to be delineated on the plan. And so that we make sure that whatever use is being made of the property, it doesn't interfere with that access area. Again, this dimensionally, I would imagine you would use something like a fire truck or a ladder truck capacity to maneuver on the site as being, being the, the dimension of that. But so, so that's the, that's the maintenance area. And then the the ice and snow storage easement has to do with the Zamboni. So the Zamboni comes out of the building and then it, it deposits the ice and snow in a location and that can accumulate over time and then it, you know, sort of changes location and makes another pile and, and so on. That storage area should be on the plans. The Zamboni itself, just in terms of practical, practicalities, Zamboni itself isn't a vehicle that can come out and like sort of maneuver around on the site. It comes out of the building, dumps the snow, goes back in the building, kind of like straightforward. So you can kind of change that angle a little bit, but, but we want to make sure that there is that area preserved for the ice and snow storage. And then obviously that doesn't interfere with like the maintenance and, and emergency access to the structure. So those are the, the concerns the selectmen has. Like I said, just to reiterate, we're not here in opposition. We're not here in favor of the boards. Or the, the planning board hasn't received a ton of public input. My understanding is on those accounts, but we do want to make sure that whatever action the board takes that, that include protecting the town's rights as in a butter and specifically their easements to use of property. So if the board has any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them.
Not for me. I think it's quite straightforward what you're asking of.
And then.
And I think that there's a gentleman in the back row over there with his hand up.
Well, if I, if I may, I just, I was gonna look at selectman Rita and if he had anything to correct me or to.
Okay, that's fair. Yes, okay. Thank you, counselor. All right, there's another. Yes, James, would you introduce this person or you can come up and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. My name is Philip Hastings. I'm an attorney with Cleveland Warriors in Bass. I represent the applicant today. We, we certainly understand the board's selectmen's position on these issues. Mr. Sununu and our consultant will address some of the parking issues, I think, later on in this hearing, but I just want to note for the record of that in respect to this, to the town's easement rights, we're certainly aware of those. Some of those are shown on the plans. We will make every effort to modify the plans to show and note those easements properly in accordance with what's on the public record. We think that can be done fairly expeditiously. It shouldn't hold up the board deliberations. Those types of revisions to the plans would typically be done as a condition subsequent to your approval. Our consultants could talk about, you know, what that's going to entail practically if you'd like. From a legal standpoint, we understand there are some issues about possible interference with the town's easement rights. Whatever, to whatever extent that turns out to be an issue and it may not be an issue at all, it's really a private matter between us and the town and is not within this board's jurisdiction to consider. As you look at a site plan, your role is to review the applications compliance with the site plan review regulations as you'll hear in a little while. We believe the project, as it's shown on the revised plans, satisfies all the requirements of your site plan review regulations, regardless of any potential or alleged impact on the town's easement rights. So we encourage you to go forward, hear our presentation and then we could go from there. Thank you.
Welcome. Any comments from any board members?
Do I have the ability to just make a follow-up statement? I know what happens when attorneys go back and forth. They're gonna laugh forever.
No, nobody's ever witnessed that.
Just make an additional comment.
You may. Okay, if you're brief.
So I, I agree that, you know, the town's legal rights are established, right? There's an easement. It's a deed. It's recorded at the registry and, and they exist and, and all of that. But what I would just say to the board is, you know, there's a reason why we call it planning board, right? The idea of planning is to kind of think ahead, right, to, 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 to forecast potential issues and, and accommodate those concerns in advance of them coming to pass. And so what we're really trying to do here, what the town's really trying to do here is to avoid future conflict. And the best way to avoid future conflict is for the planning board to do the things that we're talking about. So that's all I wanted to say.
During the July ten planning board meeting, the following motions were passed. They were a motion to request a landscape analysis by a third-party expert. And that motion was amended later to request a digital three D site rendering. A second motion was a motion to conduct a site visit. Number three was a motion to provide a parking lot schematic drawing showing available spaces and signage. Number four was a motion to provide updated changes to the plan. And number five was a motion to continue as we're doing today on August fourteen. So the board would like to thank the applicant for providing the updated materials, including the amended site plan, a landscape plan, a parking schematic, artist renderings, proposed signage and notation regarding the building orientation as requested in the July tenth planning board meeting. The review of the revisions of the updated site plan are one of the key notes on the landscape plan that's I don't know, are we gonna put some of this up on the screen? I don't know whether anybody has had the chance to go to the website of the town and see what I'm talking about. But for anybody who's interested, all of the plan and materials have been posted on the town website, including the three D rendering which was requested. Now, we received that rendering yesterday afternoon at two P M. Nonetheless, we still have it. So what I'm talking about is that the changes, there were the revisions, which is, I think, is what anyone here today would be interested in. One of the keynotes of the landscape plan, which was on plan one of the application sites, they will protect existing vegetation to remain and prune as directed by a landscape architect. Now, parking spaces available within one thousand feet of the Adventure Zone building is what I would think is a revision. At least that's new information. And as a footprint of the Sky Trail has been updated. John, can you point to where the Sky Trail is?
Just share the image. Okay. I don't really want to figure where that is.
All right.
The bottom, bottom.
Uh, James, you're on duty.
Well, this is the landscape plan, so it doesn't show as the, the site plan shows a more definitive outline of the Sky Trail, but it's in this area here between what we call the gully here and just low right in here.
Okay, the locations of the, of the walkways, walkway paths was updated. I see Mr. Innis there and he took special interest in that. But that's been updated and the paths are, as we say, wider. The location of the walkway paths were updated. The golf course layout has been updated and includes a prefab wooden bridge. I think you'll see that later in one of the renderings. The proposed directional signage has been added to page three and handicap signage was added to page seven. I think I'll just move on rather than try to find it on the drawings. And there is a fire hydrant that's been proposed between the ice arena and the Adventure Center building. There are two more infiltration ponds have been proposed and infiltration pond number two is an erosion control pond. And it's shifted slightly southeast to accommodate the Sky Trail. The construction details of the split rail fence, amenity fencing, a utility trench and turf path have been added. Directional information has been added to the building elevations. The landscaping plans show more white pine and spruce trees have also been added to enhance buffering. And we'll talk more about that when the rendering comes up. Overall, there's a lot more detail with labels to depict key aspects of the project, such as lighting, the stoned dust paths, split rail fencing, bench locations and ski and bike racks, reinforced turnaround and circular paver areas. Does that summarize pretty well, James?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question. So as a member of the conservation commission as well, on Mrs. Sununu, I have a question for you. There's a drainage culvert area that comes right down through the other side of the street through here, I believe.
Uh, it is.
Is that?
That area is, this is the drainage culvert that comes down from Golden Heights Road.
Also, it's way over there.
It rains here. It's, it's delineated as wetland. We had a wetland scientist delineate it. That's this outline here, which is down through that. There's a gully there essentially.
Yeah.
That is the wet area down through there. That's why there's a wooden footbridge. It crosses over that.
So that'll be an open area.
Yeah, we won't, we won't be touching anything within the designated wetland area. We have the wooden bridge to go over it and not affect it.
Okay. Steve? Let's put the three D renderings on the screen.
Let me know when you want to open up to other questions, just the new site plan.
Just put up your, yeah, anytime.
Okay.
No, I just, I want participation.
Well, that's how, I just had a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, and I, I could have missed it. On the, so the, the Adventure Center building, so and all the sewer and water hookup, will it go underneath the golf course to, to, like, where is that get connecting to, just because it looks like it's right.
Water and sewer from the building actually runs the other direction. It runs along here. There's existing water and sewer lines that come up to the, roughly the end of the ice arena. Those will go, those will be extended to the.
Okay, so we're not touching Valley Road at all. That's not even, okay.
No, there's no cut to Valley Road. All right, what's your name?
Question, as long as you have that. I, I have a question. Someone asked me. What material is going to be used on the new building? Is it wood? Is it vinyl?
Talk about siding.
Siding.
We haven't selected an exact product, but it will be in compliance with the architectural standards within the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so the answer is we don't know. That's fine.
And there's a building permit requirement.
No, I understand that. I, I understand all that. I was, I was asked that question, so I thought I'd ask that question. For, you know why.
Understood.
Steve? Uh, this drawing shows where the illustrations that you're about to see are positioned. So he said one, two, three, along Valley Road, four, just inside the site and so on. Okay, you can then orient yourself to see what the numbers on the screen are going to represent with regard to positioning. Number one, please. The, the, uh, it's now referred to as the Sky Trail. The Sky Trail is, to all visual examination, behind those trees. Number two. Another view. Uh, we're not gonna take. But yeah, I'll talk to you afterwards if you want to. This is number two, where you can see the large pine tree survive. Number three. So now you're further along Valley Road and you can see the structure, but behind the trees. Mr. Innis, you can't contain yourself, can you?
So are the trees that are shown here, some are existing, but it looks to me like the majority are new. And so are you showing?
I, I, from these views, these are almost entirely existing trees.
Okay. Well, I think it would be helpful if, if, as this goes through, maybe you differentiate and, because the other thing, what?
I just.
Well, let me, let me just finish. Because we put the trees in, the caliber of the trees.
Yeah, this is not a dialogue between you and the applicant. So I allowed you to say something. Now I'm gonna ask you to be quiet.
Okay.
Now, at the bottom of those drawings, you'll see that it says that they are representative and that there's no guarantee that what you see in the drawing is the exact tree that you're gonna see when it's finished. But it is a representation.
And they're not that size when they go in, just so.
Some of them are mature trees that are already there.
I understand.
But what's going to be planted is a matter for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, number, next, next slide. Now you can see better what the Sky Trail looks like, but this is inside the park. Number five.
Where's, I'm sorry, where, where's that view looking, where's number four looking from? Can you go back just quickly, Steve, to the what people have an understanding.
Okay, you're inside, you're inside the park. You're in the.
Within the boundary of the miniature golf.
That's right. You're inside the mini golf course. And it continues to move along. That is, it starts along Valley Road inside the golf course, then it's closer to the Adventure Building and then into the park area where there's that circular walkway. That okay?
Yeah.
Carry on. Five. So I think the golf course, you know, I'm not the director here, but the golf course is to the right. And the Sky Trail is now to your left and behind you. Six.
So another quick question on that one. The golf course has a split rail fence around it and that showed.
You go back to five?
I'm sorry, what was that? So there was, there's a split rail fence around the golf course, right? I think you showed that on the plan.
Is that, yeah, so sorry, this was, that was probably a lack of communication between, you know, the three D artists. So we, this is probably not represent, this is not representative of the fence we would have around mini golf. It would be not a security fence. It would be a decorative fence, like a slip rail.
Well, thanks.
Yeah, you can take issue with, you can take issue with all of the fence drawings.
Let me just, in the time we had, this is a very complicated site and model. So in the time we had, we were focusing more on trying to get the angles rather than zeroing in on, on particular details like that.
Yeah, it's gonna be a matter of, this is a pretty good idea of what the site would look like when it's finished. There's a lot to be discussed concerning the, the details and the conditions to be applied, but no, I wouldn't I wouldn't bet my last dollar that that's the fence you're gonna see. Uh, number six. Now you're inside the park. That's that bridge that was mentioned.
Okay.
And these are the, you know, crushed rock dust walkways.
Yes.
Yeah. And they're a little wider, thanks to you.
Thank you.
And it's in the foreground, you can see some of the area where the the water retention pond.
Ah, this is actually the gully that runs from the drainage area that runs down under the road from Golden Heights Road. There's, has drainage pipe that empties out. We're staying away from that. That's the reason this bridge is here is to pass over that without disturbing the delineated wetlands. And this is intended to represent the gully that runs from that area down towards, that exits out at the existing cross-country trail.
Yeah.
So.
Number seven. Number seven. Here you get a better look at the building, the Adventure Building. And some of the uh vegetation.
Bill?
Yes.
Can you explain, what's the extent? It looks like there's an extension on the building, also in the previous picture.
It's just, that's just part of the footprint of the building as shown. It's, it's shown in the the building schematic. It's just the shape of the building. No, it's not a pure rectangle.
So.
Well, Mrs. Chair, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Sanuno, so can you tell us the building right here, can you tell me where the front of the building and which way it's facing?
This is, this is the side that faces Valley Road. Um, I guess I would consider this the back of the building.
Okay.
I mean, in my mind, that's how I think of it. I think of the front as the side that faces out towards the pond.
Yeah.
Because that has the lower level walk-in, walk-out area where the uh cross-country and mountain bike um center will be moved to. Um, this is sort of the, whoops, again, I I I think of it in my, in my mind, as we've worked through this, is we have the lower level, which is that walk-in, walk-out mountain bike center, the main level, which is this level here, which is where Advent, the um check-in for activities, uh, you know, the 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 retail that we're moving from the Adventure Center as well, the 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 snack bar, those things will be located here. And then there's that upper level.
Upper level is.
Because of the grade at this, from this side, it's really, it's a two-level building versus three-level from the pond side.
Just trying to get an idea about the pond. So what pond, so what's on the third level?
Uh, uh, activity space, it can be used as a meeting area, it could be used for uh receptions, events, things like that.
It's also cafe seating, as I recall from the plan.
It could be, yes. It's, it it's not very specifically.
Okay, we don't have all day for this, you know, this is the it's some of these meetings, you know, I could recommend that you bring a lunch.
Let's set out.
Okay, uh, next. Okay, so now you see the bay, the Adventure Center from the other side.
This is from the, this is from the patio. The miniature golf is on your left here. And again, that's the main level of the building. That what, that that, this is the side that faces Valley Road. This is the side that faces Village Road.
Number nine. Might as well stay on your feet, James.
Okay.
So we're looking at, here is the.
The maze in the building, so the building would basically be hu- be behind you here from this view.
Number ten.
This is on the approach from the park as you walk down that pedestrian path and you start to approach the building. This is where it ramps up to the main level of the building here, and down here is where you can see the lower level. This is the pond side or uh of the building.
Okay, James, what is the the vegetation to the left of the pathway?
Uh, it's, it's, it's.
Is that one of those?
Wildflowers, it's, you know.
Where are the?
That also, is that um?
Where are the drainage ponds?
Like drainage, the infiltration pond.
Uh, well, I mean, where the infiltration, this, I would say that the plan supersedes this conceptual drawing for where that pond is gonna be. So I can't say for sure if we're in this image again. They were working just to fill in.
Uh, and James, if I may, um, well, just a teacher from associates with the engineers record, the pond is basically gonna be kind of down here out of view, but down the hill, kind of right in this area, if you were kind of scanning over. Uh, that mix was prepared by the last state of Arctic. It's like a wildlife pollinator mix, kind of like a meadow type thing, lonely and so you don't have to mow it. Cause it's allowed to grow, you know, it'll look like that one.
Eleven.
This is further back along the approach. Uh, we have these, uh, we have trails converging. Again, this is from the parking lot. This is from Town Square. Uh, this kind of a a circular area here can be used as kind of a waypoint for people coming in from various directions and get their bearings about where they are.
That's like a traffic circle.
Essentially.
Twelve.
So we need a traffic in.
Again, another view from further back. This is the pond side facing, the pond facing side. You can see the pond right here. And this picture is behind you.
Thirteen.
And that's a view of that pond, it's pond side base of the building.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Again, another view. Now you're looking back towards, you can see the ice arena in the, in the background there.
I'm sorry, where?
The ice arena is in the far left.
There's the ice arena right there. This is, you're standing on the cross-country trail, looking back towards Town Square.
And that perspective of the Adventure Building, where's the front door, James?
Uh, the main entrance for um uh ac- uh accessing the mountain bike and cross-country center is right here.
Yeah.
And the, you can also come up there, uh, up the side ramp, the side path that goes along above here and enter into this level as well.
I think that's it. And Steve?
Last thing, could we go?
Okay. Back to business.
Thank you.
Just a word about ordinances. The town ordinances have been assembled over the decades and when town residents have expressed their opinions on development by voting at town meetings to approve the ordinances. The ordinances represent the collective opinion of town residents over time regarding how the voters want development regulated. The planning board's function is to observe and uphold these ordinances, and the planning board is doing so with regard to this application. So as mentioned earlier, this is a continuation of the public hearing. The public hearing will remain open until the deliberation period among the board members begins. The vote on the application may not occur today. It will occur following the completion of the board's deliberations. And I'm beginning the meeting with the privilege of the floor because this application has attracted a great deal of public attention. It is fair to say that this application is the largest and most potentially altering application seen by the planning board in the last twenty years, probably the last forty years. It's customary to summarize what has already transpired at a public hearing before continuing the hearing. I will do so by reading the portion of the pub, uh, Planning Board July eight minutes referring to public comment. It reads that multiple members of the public spoke to ex- express comments and questions with several expressing concerns about the project's visual impact on Corcoran Pond and the surrounding natural landscape. Speakers felt that the structures would be an eyesore on the character of the town's natural aesthetic. Some suggested relocating the project to the mountain and others proposed alternative concepts focusing on more nature-based activities and designs. Suggestions were made to stake out the site and to show the structure's height and to conduct traffic and engineering studies. Other speakers raised questions about walkway with potential noise impact, building height, and the potential changes to the valley's character. Other comments were on solar panels and raised questions about the design, designing the facility for year-round use. Then Secretary Morgan read letters from the members of the public into the record, including that one that was enthusiastically in favor of the adventure zone and commercial development. Although it is important for the public to know that it has been heard, it is equally important for the public to understand that the planning board is unbiased and impartial, and that the planning board considers the facts and the content of the zoning ordinances and the site regulations in its deliberations. So that the hearing remains focused and efficient as well as fair, I'm asking anyone in the public gallery who wishes to speak to respect everyone's time. The public has already been heard at the July eight public hearing and at the July tenth uh Planning Board meeting. The planning board will not accept repetition points already made and only new commentary pertaining to this application will be heard. I will reiterate that the developer is not here to dialogue with the public and it is not required, he is not required to answer public questions. The same applies to the planning board land use consultant and council. Okay, have you heard all this? If there's anyone here would like to say something to the planning board, now is the time, and it's customary to provide two minutes for a public comment. Now I can see Mister Ennis is uh anxious. Yeah, so here you are. Tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm Tom Ennis, fifty-one St. Rose Mountain Road. And I wanted to thank the applicant for updating the plans to showing some of the additional uh items that were needed. I have a few things. I just wanted to go over after I looked at the plans. Um, just on the renderings, I'm assuming that's showing more of a mature new plantings as opposed to when they're put in. And so I think that's important for people to recognize. What you're seeing is not what it's gonna look like. That's like over a period of time. So that depends on the maintenance, et cetera. Same on the meadow, like the idea of the meadow, but that usually doesn't work out the first year. It takes a number of years for it to really establish itself. The third thing was the amount of um existing plant material, um, the ski touring area. Um, it's very narrow next to the path. It's like twenty feet from what I could tell. Um, and that's gonna be very thin, cause I think most of it's pine. So the understory, there won't be much understory um related to that. I was wondering if you could reduce the ski training area or move it to the open field, which you kind of use now uh and make and retain all those trees that are in that area. Does everyone know where I'm talking about? Okay. Um, sorry. Page. Um, I was wondering if you would consider doing machine place builders instead of the concrete retaining wall? I think that's more conducive to what we have in Waterville Valley. Um, and wouldn't, I shouldn't take up any more room than what you, what you were showing.
You're making suggestions. You're not having a dialogue with the applicant.
The planning board, sorry.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, the ponds, um, are they retention or detention? Do they hold water all the time, or do they just when a heavy uh rainstorm water sits and then it percolates out? And I think that's about it.
Good, cause your time's up.
Perfect.
Ray?
I have, I have two. I have a letter from Pat.
Tell us who you are and where you live.
Ray Kachaski Windsor Hill. And I have two. I have a letter that that Pat wants me to read to the planning board, which I don't wanna include my time, cause I have a couple of comments, but I'm gonna read your letter. Pat Kachaski, uh, Chico our way, B fourteen, recent submission from Tyrell Corporation Adventure Center. I'm sorry for not being here in person. I have testified before the public hearing, but I wanted to reiterate my position on the above referenced item before you. I am not opposed to the goal of increasing numbers of visitors coming to and staying in the valley. As a full-time resident, appreciate the businesses and improve my standard, which improve my standard of living and welcome those who wish to share what I am so fortunate to have. I am, however, opposed to the planned submission. Both the master plan and the zoning regulations make note of the uniqueness of Waterville Valley. Specifically, the location within the national forest and its designation as the town at the end of the road. I believe we, the residents of Waterville Valley, have a moral responsibility to protect and support what we have. And at the same time, support when recovered sustainable businesses. I recognize the attempt to adhere to current regulation, which on the surface of Waterville. And at the same time, I believe we should adhere to the stated goal to protect the natural sea and scenic beauty of the town. Article one, C three of March eleven, twenty twenty-five zoning ordinance. There must be a way that we, both residents and businesses, can achieve their goals. Let's get creative and work together to make the town at the end of the road the unique place we all love. Permission to approach?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Now, can I have my two minutes?
Uh, well, that is your two minutes, but.
Oh, if that's.
Go ahead.
My time?
Hey, be brief.
Yeah, I will. Uh, let's see, Pat and I saw the pictures for the first time this morning. I would like to see more details on the Sky Train. It would maybe a three D computer-generated model. The renderings are not three D. They keep referring to them, but they're not.
Yeah, I understand.
And I would like the town to be able to hire an engineer or a project manager that will guarantee that what we get is what we see in the pictures. And I really thank the board for all the time that they put in, and especially the chairman. Doing a great job.
Yeah. Anybody who wants this job can uh. Okay, thank you, Ray. Anybody else? Uh, I'd like to, for a moment now, to talk about site visit. Uh, this is a continuation of a public hearing. The planning board passed a motion to conduct a site visit. So I want to uh approach the applicant and say the planning board suggests a date like August twentieth, ten AM. It's up for discussion, but I'm looking at James to see when, you know, we're, we need to do a site visit.
So the, oh, I'm sure people, so, um, yeah, so I I notified um um the town um last Tuesday that the site would be staked as of this past Monday.
Yes.
And it is now, it is staked. It's been prepared for a site visit, so um when you wanna schedule that, that's your, at your discretion.
Okay, I made a suggestion.
And it's your call. I mean, I will, will work with whatever date you decide. We're not gonna try to dictate your schedule.
All right, I have a hand up.
So would that include then this balloon test that?
Yeah, we will float on on that day, we will float balloons, several balloons to the height of the structures. But obviously, that's gonna, we wanna make sure we know when that's gonna be, so we can be there to do that.
Okay, so it's part of.
Not a complicated process.
A minute, that's part of.
Just put them up there and leave them there. They won't last, so.
Yeah, but it's like, it's part of the proof statement that what you saw, Ray just mentioned, is what we see, is that what we're going to get? And the the balloons will at least demonstrate the height of the structure. And um whether or not those trees will actually uh screen the uh Sky Trail, as it's now called. Okay, that's one thing. And then you'll see the stakes, they'll tell you exactly where the uh planned elements of the um Adventure Center will go. And then, you know, we, I presume you marked or will be able to indicate what trees are going to survive.
Again, I will indicate where we intend to preserve the tree line. There's no guarantee on trees surviving. I mean, there's, if, you know, I think any arborist will tell you, if you take down some trees, it's, we hopefully that everything we don't touch will remain healthy. But if if some other trees that we didn't plan to take down are affected, we'll do our best to remediate that, but we can't. We cannot point to each individual t- tree and say, give a guarantee.
Yeah, I promise that you will survive.
I, that is not a, that would not be a a accurate representation, so I'm not gonna stand here.
Okay, but that, that will not be a condition either. And that, uh, yeah, you do construction on a site.
Yeah, not, not every tree. Stake the site and we will do our best to indicate where things will be.
Okay, but we're gonna ask that you do your best for all those trees to survive.
There's, there's no mistake.
Yes, okay.
Look, if I can just make one more comment.
Yes.
We have every interest in keeping the site attractive and keeping the town attractive as anyone else. Our business depends on it. We, we have that in mind with everything we do. I know there's disagreement about this, but it is in our best interest as well to make the site attractive, to make the valley attractive, to make it appealing to guests. So we will do everything in our power to continue that.
And that is logical. All right, I see a hand and uh one more.
Good morning, John Panic Allen, Ten Chico Way. Um, I noticed on the three D rendering that was put up by Mister Royer that um a lot of the pictures were from inside the park. I would prefer to see somewhere pictures, three D rendering, particularly the Skyway, Sky Trail, whatever you wanna call it, from say, Musrun. Uh, the Town Square sign, different areas to see the height of that. Number one. Number two, as I have failed myself to reading all the rules and regulations, even though it's a tedious thing. Um, the planning board, uh, one of the page four, one of the purposes of your obligations is to ensure. Obligations is to ensure the harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development of this town. Please take that into consideration when you do so.
I can, uh, I can make a comment about that. Thank you, first of all. Uh, but nonetheless, some of the statements that are in the master plan. Are not applicable as town ordinance. And that they are not, uh, let's just say. You could never take a statement like that, uh, to a judge in a superior court in New Hampshire and expect him to rule in your favor. Okay, we've heard from you, but I, I want to move on. We don't have all day to do this. But that's one of the problems that, uh, the planning board recognizes. It's going to be a very large project to try to overhaul all documents. Just to render only those that are there that would be enforceable. I'm looking at counselor and she's nodding and saying, yeah, that would be a good thing to do. Because we're going to get into more trouble. The people are going to read things like this and say, why don't you do this? Because it's not entirely enforceable. So we'll take it upon ourselves to fix. The ordinances to the best of our ability and to strip away those which are not applicable. Okay, moving on. So I suggested the. Mike has a question.
I have a question. Understanding that the walk around or whatever we wish to.
Site visit.
Site visit, I'm sorry. That the site visit is designed for the members of the board. I think that it is also important that the board somehow. Make sure the community understands that they are welcome to attend and not comment.
It is part of the public hearing. But it, but it is not a commentary period. As I. As I stated earlier, this is not a conversation between the public and the applicant.
I, I just was reiterating for public hearing. And it is six days. I, I don't know how you get that out.
We don't have to notice and it's part of an extended public.
Then we can just do it.
We can do it.
Good.
Since you're stating a specific time, date and place, um, you can just continue it as part of the public hearing.
Okay.
And it is, you know, time becomes a, a problem and it's, and I'm going to look at James when I say this, I'm. I'm suggesting at this time that maybe we should consider. An extension beyond the twenty-third deadline. That is, we had sixty-five days, right? It ends on, uh, August twenty-third. To conduct the, the review, the site visit and to provide time for the. Resolution of the select board's easement concern. The planning board is taking the position that it doesn't have enough information presently to make an informed decision. As of this meeting and that the site visit will help fill the information gap. The planning board, well. Would the applicant be willing to grant an extension to provide the planning board with more time to conduct the site visit? And to evaluate information?
Uh, if, if I might ask, since you do have till the twenty-third, I'd ask if you, you know. If you are conducting the site visit on the twentieth, when do you plan to schedule your next meeting to continue your deliberations? I assume that would be your intent. Are you talking about waiting until next month's regular meeting?
Yes.
Uh, I, I would request that you schedule a special meeting for, after the site visit to continue deliberations at that point. That's still within the, the prescribed sixty-five day deadline.
We have some difficulty with digesting all the information. Including the, you know, renderings that were just provided. They're good renderings and they solve many problems. But, um, it's my view that, uh. The planning board would request additional time to evaluate all, and you'll hear more. About other matters that we want to discuss further. You'll hear more about. Means by which we want to gather more information. In other words, the planning board is doing its best to do its job. Okay, I'm making a request.
I, well, before I, I respond to that request, I'd like to hear what else you're.
Okay.
Discussing. So I suggest we postpone.
I'll leave the question, I'll leave the question open.
You've discussed.
Not trying to like impose anything but to say that. We need a little more time. Yeah, I, I look, I understand.
Hear what else, what other information you need, because we've provided quite a bit of in, in information above and beyond. What is required in the site plan application. Um, you still have another nine days. So, uh, you know, I would, I would respectfully ask that you consider how you can, you know, make your considerations within the prescribed timeframe.
Okay, I understand the pushback, but, uh, okay, I want to hear. Liz, you have your hand up. Liz is our land use consultant.
Yes, hello. Uh, could we push the site visit sooner rather than the twentieth? Would that work for everyone's schedule so that?
I just wanted to give, the reason I chose that day was, we're going to announce that the, the public is welcome. As observers, but if you said we're going to do it tomorrow, it's going to leave people with, in other words, that's an exaggerated comment. That's the reason I chose the twentieth. For the time being, you know, at least I would stay with that date. Any other comment?
Not a question.
I'm going to make keep a mark for, okay, Mr. Ennis, what do you have to say?
I just wanted to ask when you do the site visit, is the public allowed to address the planning board?
Typically, no. You're there to observe. Liz, I'll make some statements at the time that the site visit occurs. And that, uh, it's essentially for the applicant to show us what he intends to do.
So if we did have comments, can we submit them through email or written?
I suppose so. You know, that's.
Well.
Yes, go ahead.
It's really also too for record keeping as well, because you don't want side conversations to be had because it is a public. So, so that's just why.
Understand.
And then, yes, you could absolutely then when we need again to deliberate.
Yes.
You know, then.
I'm just trying to figure out what's the best way to get certain issues and concerns. So you're aware of them, that's all.
Yes, but here's one of the, the circumstances that I say, oh, now we have a site visit. And we need some time to evaluate what has taken place at the site visit. That's one of the reasons I asked for the extension. That none of these things happen, you know, very quickly. And you, you know, we're trying to be responsive to the public, but at the same time say, this is our job as the planning board. And that, uh, we can't spend all of our time, you know, trying to massage the. The questions and the problems that are raised by the public. We got to deal with the documents we have.
I appreciate that, but there are certain things like I brought up today that hadn't been addressed, which would be nice to hear at least a response.
Okay, so.
To the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, fine. Then if you gave us, uh, your questions.
Do I need to send in formally the questions I raised today?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
But nonetheless, we don't want chaos at the site visit.
I understand.
You know, that we're in the woods and people are trying to talk to each other, that this won't work.
That's why I asked the question.
Right.
You guys have been tromping around in there, James. Like if a group this size shows up in there, it's going to be a logistical problem, right? Like. Are there paths in there like?
There, there's, there's a few, there's some open spaces because the disc golf, there's some space in there for disc golf and things like that. I mean. You can't crawl through every square foot of it, sure. But we, we have, we have staked it out. We have a, a diagram that shows which stakes indicate what structures and things like that. So. Some of them you might be walking along the edge of trail and see the stake in there, but you're not going to be able to walk right up to it. Well, you could if you want to bushwhack.
I think it's specifically like what a lot of people care about is that tree line that's there now on this. Along the edge of the cross.
I think for the most part, you can walk along and see where that's going to be, you know, um, again, it's, there's, there's some. Thoughts that are fairly open. Again, the disc golf area, uh, the disc golf hole in particular is fairly open. There's a few sections, um, alongside the gully that where part of the building will go that's fairly open. Then there's some areas that are kind of dense and you're going to have to, again, if you want to go bushwhacking, great, but you'll have to look through and see. You know, there's the stake for the corner of the building here and things like that. So, um, you know, it will, we'll do our best to make. Make it clear where everything is if it's a spot that's hard to access.
Right, cool. And it's, it gives me at least a moment to say that. You can see, James, you know, what's going to happen. We're going to do the site visit and I think it's reasonable to do it between, it's the fourteenth. I'm going to do it on the twentieth. And that there will be time when questions arise. In other words, we have to deal with the public. And that'll take a few days. We're going to run right into the twenty-third. And that's why I'm asking for this extension.
I, I, I mean, respectively, you've already had three meetings where the public has been avail, been able to comment.
Yep.
Um, you could schedule the site visit for Monday and have, you know, uh, the rest of the week for people to send in additional comments. Um, I, I, again, I, there's, it's been, it's been two months. We've provided lots of additional information. There's been multiple opportunities for the public to comment. They always have the opportunity to send in further comment, um, via email or letter. Um, I, I just feel like that there's all, all the substantial information that's required to make a decision has been provided.
Let's continue the meeting. So what will happen is at, uh, well, first of all, the application has been accepted as complete by the board. But as soon as the public hearing is closed, which is expected to occur at the site visit. I will then ask, uh, call another meeting and ask for a motion from the board to approve the application. And while the motion is on the floor, conditions may be applied to the motion. Each will be deliberated. Deliberation is the process the planning board follows to assess the merits of the application. No vote will occur until all the condition suggestions have been heard and deliberated. The planning board will deliberate on the conditions one by one. The motion to accept may be passed or it may fail depending on how the members vote following the deliberation period. Conditions will be defined as conditions precedent, those which are agreed and fulfilled before the construction begins. And conditions subsequent, which are those which are fulfilled as the construction proceeds. Uh, one note, which is, uh. Recusal from the deliberation. No planning board members are permitted to have a conversation with the developer, uh, or their representatives regarding this application. If any conversations with the developer have occurred, the member in question must recuse himself or herself. But since no, uh, recusals have occurred so far, the planning board will proceed with six voters. Question.
No, six voters.
Six voters.
Mr. Chairman.
You may speak.
Thank you. I'm just, because I'm Laura Spectrumer and I'm one of the town's attorneys. There's a lot of us here today. Um, I know when you and I spoke, you had wanted to be able to have a conversation with the applicant about some of the various. Conditions of approval, particularly the conditions subsequent. If you close the public hearing at the site visit, you will be unable to do that. Because once the public hearing is closed, you can't have conversations with anyone in the public, including the applicant. So I would suggest that perhaps you do not want to close the public hearing at the site visit. That does not mean you have to let a free for all happen during the conversation about.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Um, talking about how to make yourself, I, I would just know that if you're going to have conversations with the applicant. It needs to be during the public hearing process.
Okay, then I'm not going to fall on my sword about closing the public hearing, that's for sure. Comments from the peanut gallery? Okay, uh, so we got past that and, uh, well, nobody said anything about, oh, there are no recusers. We're going to go ahead with six voters. All right, proceeding now with, uh, discussion.
Just a point of order.
Yes.
Uh, you have the date. Do you have a time on the twenty?
Ten AM.
Okay, ten AM. Right, I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. It's good to reiterate.
Was that agreed to? That time and date?
That's still open.
Well.
You will need to do a motion to continue.
I, I didn't think it had been finalized, agreed to.
Okay, I asked the applicant if that was acceptable. And I don't, I don't think it's been, you know, acknowledged or decided, but, uh, do we need a motion to do this?
At the end, when you continue the meeting, you will need to continue to a time and date specific and that will be the next time and date.
When you say continue the meeting, what I, you mean is if we temporarily close the public hearing. And continue with the planning board meeting, is that correct?
You will continue the public hearing to the site wall and then to your next meeting date as well. So we will do continuance to both. So that you don't have to send out additional public notice.
Okay.
If I agree. So I'm, I'm, I'm watching them over there. They don't look happy.
Well, what am I going to do?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, so a quick question, the meeting is going to, the, um. Slate view is going to be on the twentieth at ten AM. Are we coming back here to discuss that matter? And will it be open to the public to discuss, to also speak? The same day? Is that?
Well, you can do it. You can do it either way. Some boards will have the site visit and then come back to have a conversation about that. Other boards will have the site visit, go home, digest it, and then discuss the site visit at its next meeting. It is entirely up to you how you want to do that. You can come back here. If you do that, the public hearing is still open. And you can conduct that meeting however you like. You can have a conversation among the board members, raise whatever questions you have. Give them to the applicant for them to come back with responses for you at your next meeting. The public likewise could raise whatever questions they thought of on the site visit. Post them to the applicant to come back with answers at the next meeting. Alternatively, you could just do the site visit. Everyone can go home, think of whatever questions you have, come back to your next meeting and raise those to the applicant. I think the applicant, based on what I'm hearing today, would prefer you do the site visit on the twentieth, come back here. Have a meeting where people raise the questions they have so that then it can then immediately go back. Bring you answers for your next meeting, at which point you can hear the answers, hopefully post the public hearing, deliberate and make a decision.
Okay, I'm leaning in toward, uh, let's do the site visit. And at the next meeting decide or talk about what we learned and how it will be, how it'll affect the decision. Your question?
No, that's fine. I, I did have questions though, just to kind of move things along that while we have these people here to, to, that they could, if they can answer for us, but I don't want to. Disrupt.
What's your question?
Well, so to Tom's point about the, the ponds, are they retention or are they detailed? Is that the right term? Top, you know, please, can you?
Yeah, so those ponds will be dry in the normal conditions. Uh, they're designed to dry within seventy-two hours, but any rate of it.
Okay, uh, that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I thought, but just.
And then, um, so, and then I, I had a parking question as well, um.
Parking's coming.
Yeah, so we'll wait on that, I guess. Yeah, that's it.
Parking. A few observations. The, the most recent schematic that was provided is fifteen years old, dated two thousand and ten. The second map in the submission shows parking easement areas. It's dated May nineteen ninety-nine. The parking drawings from ninety-eight and two thousand and ten reflect the spaces needed at the town, at the time. To serve the town square, town businesses, surrounding hotels. The board seeks clarification on how these past parking counts address the potential increase in the demand generated by the proposed adventure zone. Given that the number of spaces has not been altered or increased.
So the parking schematic that was provided, the, the meets and bounds of that parking area is the, is what I'll call the town square parking area. That is not parking for the hotels. The snowy owl has its own parking, uh, uh, area, which they have, have exclusive rights to. And there's, they have eighty-two spaces as is required. The, uh, the brown, uh, the black bear has its own. Um, set of spaces that are also not included in there. If, if you go back in past history, there was never a, a calculation done for how many spaces town square required. Uh, but there are two hundred, approximately two hundred and eighty spaces between. Two parking lots, which are referred to in the existing easement agreements as the east side lot, which is the lot next to the ice arena and the west side lot. East and west of Village Road, um, uh, the west side lot, which has approximately two hundred and twenty-one parking spaces. Um, so, as I said, there was never any specific parking counts, but based on our. Uh, usage, especially during the summer, that's why we believe that, which is, which is low utilization of the existing. Uh, parking areas, we believe that this will not, uh. of the existing, uh, parking areas, we believe that this will not, uh, unduly impact, uh, parking and traffic, uh, we believe that there's more than enough capacity to accommodate the use of this site, which, whose greatest use will be between May and October, not during the winter months. Um, and so, that is why we believe that it's, uh, would be, uh, a, a necessary use of space to add an additional parking lot to the area. It could be done, we could add more paving right in the, the, on, on the property as well, but I think that's an unnecessary addition of more asphalt that would, would not be to the benefit of, of the whole, the whole site.
Okay, as, as you will hear, the problem is that confidence in these numbers. These pages are old, we count two hundred and seventy-seven, I think was one uh, of the counts and.
Well, the pages are old, but the physical dimensions of the parking.
Right, it hasn't changed, however, you're introducing a very large uh, proposal, you're introducing a, um, it is the largest event that we've seen in years, and it's, it's gonna have some impact. We don't know what impact it's gonna have on traffic, we don't know what impact it's gonna have on parking demand, we don't know what will happen during peak periods. All of these questions arise, I can't answer them. So I will, I'll give you, you know, some examples and tell you that, uh, one map shows, uh, easements for the snowy owl, so I then should understand that those are snowy owl parking spots and that I should deduct them from the total. And it, it appears that there's no indication that the space count on the nineteen eighty-eight map shows two hundred and seventy-seven, or to which it refers. The planning board would like to see the easements affecting the parking and to know whether these easement areas are counted or whether they're not counted.
Are you referring to the easement for the snowy owl?
Yes, or any.
As, as I said before, that is not included in those parking totals. If you look at the meets and boundary plan, as well as the two thousand and ten schematic, if you add up the parking spaces, not including the snowy owl, there's two hundred and twenty parks, parking spaces on the west side. And originally fifty-six spaces on the east side, there are now seventy-three spaces on the east side because several of the lobes of park, of, uh, islands have been removed over the years, so that lot now contains seventy-three spaces.
Okay, what I'm getting at is a lack of confidence in the numbers. And whether or not it's gonna have, the, the fact that you're gonna.
You have the schematic of the parking lot, the parking lots that, that details the number of spaces in each section of the parking lot. And the parking lot hasn't physically changed.
Yes, not since the eighties.
Yes, you're making my point, the parking lot hasn't physically changed, so the counts, even though the plan is older, haven't changed.
But you're, you're introducing a large element.
That's a different point, not, the, the point that the counts are uncertain is not a valid point, the counts are certain because the physical dimensions of the parking lots haven't changed.
I can also tell you that there's no way to really count what the spaces are, because those spaces are, are dirt.
Most of them are paved.
I beg to differ, but.
You're thinking, snowy owl parking lots are not paved, those are not included in this count.
Right, but the counts that I see on the drawings extend out toward, or further away toward the bear. And, you know, those lots are in bad condition, and one of, at least one of them, I was there last night. I could tell you it's dirt.
There's, there's, there's one lobe that is dirt.
Okay, but what's on the?
The plan was measured and delineated as a meets and bounds survey, and the number of parking spots was indicated. The dimensions, we have not altered the dimensions of that area, so the number of parking spaces indicated is accurate.
You have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I understand what both of you are saying. This is my concern. There are six times when the village, the town, the resort, resort association, any of the entities that we all know and love have things going on in the village. Perfect example is Chowder Fest. We've all been to Chowder Fest, we all love Chowder Fest. During Chowder Fest, I lost when I went to Chowder Fest recently, because we walked down Green Peak, because we didn't want to take up any parking spaces. Because during Chowder Fest and other times, parking is absolutely at a premium for all of those spaces. My concern is, and let's just take that Chowder Fest as an example. There's not gonna be any parking, or no significant parking, available for this new facility. And I'm just picking on that one day, there are other times when the same thing applies. Chowder Fest, for example, and other situations. My concern is that during those specific times, when there already isn't much of any parking available in the greater village area, if that's a terminology of art. That's a problem. From my, from my point of view on those specific things. And I don't mean to.
And in all due respect to, to the planning board, I manage that property, I manage that parking lot, and, uh, you are incorrect. Uh, the, the busiest day that we have is the fourth of July. During the fourth of July, I went and looked at the parking, I actually took a drone shot two years ago from the, from the air to see how much parking was left. Blackbird parking lot was not full, the seventeen, the.
Is not included in the thousand. Excuse me, what area?
The, the area by the, by the skate park, the old skate park area, that area was not full. Um, I went down this year, parked very, very close to when the fireworks were going off, I was able to park in that lot right behind the, the, the skate park. So I disagree with you respectfully, that we do not have a parking problem in this town, and that's actually the reason why many of our parking lots have turned to dirt, because we don't utilize them. We don't need them. So we're not, they, they are not nearly as well kept, because we don't have the business, uh, the business that is need, necessary to need that parking, and that's one of the major reasons we're putting this in, is to increase our business levels in town. Thank you.
Yeah.
Of course, well, like, so hearing.
Please, go ahead.
Back and forth, do we need a parking study, or what is, what would increase the confidence level of the board, or, you know, I mean?
My answer to that would be yes. That, uh, you know, I could go on in some detail, but I'd say that there's inconsistencies in the part, between the parking schematic, the parking area inset that's on the drawings that were, uh, pro- provided, I think that was page three, sheet three. Uh, yes, there are inconsistencies. And that, uh, board members having difficulty determining how many spaces there really are, and what does it mean to parking demand in the town?
Well, and Mister Chairman, I think this is a perfect situation where the board can and should retain an independent expert to determine, A, how many realistic parking spots are there in this area? Based on the dimension D required for parking spots. And B, how many spots are needed for this use? And while they're doing that, they can look at this parking easement and determine how many, the town also has a right to. And what, when you look at the shared parking and the flexible parking and the various parking allowances in your zoning ordinance, what the parking situation actually is, that way you've got an independent third party making that determination. And there's no one saying, well, I interpret it this way, I interpret it this way, who have any interest in the situation?
Okay. I understand, then I'll say that the board requires additional information to verify the proposed parking layout and that it can be achieved and stated number of spaces. The parking analyst provided to date does not clearly demonstrate that existing parking is sufficient to meet peak demand. So I'm gonna suggest that the planning board request that a qualified third-party expert conduct a traffic and parking study to determine the traffic and parking capacity needed to satisfy the parking regulations and the demands as determined by an expert.
Just parking, not traffic, right?
That's, well, you're telling me, I'm listening.
So you've mentioned traffic and parking.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure, when we're gonna hire an expert, we need to tell them what they're looking at. You have said analyze traffic and parking to make sure the parking requirements are met, so I wanna make sure we're looking at parking and not traffic, because they're very different things.
Okay, but, uh, what's in my mind is that if I don't understand traffic, how am I gonna assess what parking's needed?
Do you understand what I'm saying? If you are requesting a traffic study, they're going to look at the road infrastructure, they're going to look at how things are constructed. Whereas a parking study is to look at the area, look at the schematics, and give you a total amount of, um, a total amount of spaces required.
It will, it will involve a traffic count in terms of how many people are going to come to the site.
That's another thing that.
But not.
I don't have a lot.
They're gonna come to the site.
They will, yes, they will estimate, so you're saying traffic as in visitors, we're saying traffic as in vehicles. So.
Okay, then, then I will limit to parking. Limit to parking. Hold on, hold on. We have Bob. I mean, because I know your experience in dealing with town management matters.
Bob Freeze, um, Bull Path, it seems to me the missing element in this discussion is how many um, customers the, uh, applicants expected to have to, to make their project viable. And that's a, a number that I don't think has been provided, so.
No, I don't know what it is.
So how, how do you match the number of parking places with the anticipated potential volume of people?
I understand.
My understanding is twelve to.
Each use has a designated expected traffic count. Now, I don't know that in the ITO, there is a skyway designated use, but I'm sure a traffic engineer can say, this is analogous to this outdoor recreational use and this is how many cars per hour, in a peak hour it's gonna generate. So there's a book that tells experts how many cars it's gonna be, it has nothing to do with how many they think they need to make it viable.
Okay, but.
Okay.
And that is not in the purview of the planning board yet.
It was in.
Madam Vice Chairman.
Well, it was, it was in the, um, paperwork, twelve, or a thousand to twelve hundred participants a week, so they, they did provide that, so I don't know.
I remember seeing that too, per week.
Okay.
So that, that is.
Yeah, and how, what impact that's gonna have, yeah. Just a minute, please, okay. Katie, you had something to say?
I have two things, but I wanna remember my first one. Oh, my second one was for the traffic study. Do they take into account that we're a pedestrian village? So of the thousand to twelve hundred, X percent would be pedestrian walking to and from and not driving from the hotels, from hotels, houses, condos, wherever, I would imagine that's going to come into.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you for that.
My first step part is, when you're looking at the parking, what precedence do you, as a planning board, take in to what we already do in a town? Because we, although we're not allowed to have on-street parking, we do allow entities to have on-street parking at times. And we do allow entities to have parking that is not adjacent, when parking isn't adjacent to somebody, we allow them to park on their grass. So do you guys, are you taking that into account as well, because those are already historical things we do allow?
Yeah.
Even though it's against the rules.
It is against the rules.
Nobody.
Well, not, not here to say it's okay to break the rules, no.
We certainly have a precedent where we are saying, yes, it's okay for this.
I would, oh, we certainly, but this is an enforcement matter, it has nothing to do with the.
That is a fair look from the applicant's viewpoint, that historically these things are allowed. So why is that be?
I would say no to that.
Things that comply with the ordinance. Okay.
That's why, we're stuck with that problem of complying with ordinance, so are you.
So, um, yeah, we have the ability, right, we capture a lot of data, Tim mentioned, he, he said the fourth of July is typically the biggest, biggest time of the year. I think the hockey tournaments, and I don't know when they start, but those generally drive a lot of parking in the town square area. And to Katie's point, like, we should be a pedestrian village, I scream about this a lot. We're really not necessarily, at least, maybe the people that live here are sometimes, but we have a lot of people who drive to the post office, and we have a mile worth of walking in this town. It's not a knock on anybody, people have different reasons for wanting to drive to the post office, or carrying big bucks, or. My point is, that the folks who come up for the hockey tournaments and others might be staying at the hotels around town, and they drive to town square to use that parking lot to do their thing, whether they're carrying hockey bags or whatever their reason is. We don't get a lot of pedestrian use in here, we should encourage that and make this problem less of an issue, but at the, I believe at this time, we have a problem with, that our parking lots do get utilized, particularly during the hockey tournaments. I don't know if you see that as well, but it's something I've noticed over the years, people parking in places where it's not a parking space, they pull up on the grass or up on the mulch somewhere, or whatever else, because they get it as close to town square, hockey rink, and whatever as possible. So I feel like we need to figure out that, what's the number, it sounds like twelve hundred or eleven hundred, um, a, a week. What that looks like during very peak periods of time where those lots are all gonna get utilized, um, and figure out what that looks like for us.
Right.
Are we in good shape?
Liz?
Um, so the applicant has stated that the hours of operation, um, are to be expected to run May through October. Um, according to the Hockey Academy, uh, who runs the website, the hockey tournaments run through, uh, November through January. So if the applicant is proposing that this will close in October, that should not affect the hockey tournaments.
Okay, but what, what we're trying to conceive here is what will happen. Okay, so we, we build this, uh, adventure center, and there's a hockey tournament. And then there's something else going on in town. Where the congestion is gonna occur is that parking lot right beside the arena, that, that arena, and then what the, uh, select board is raising is a question about, uh, easement. That easement is, uh, well, how many spaces are set aside for the, uh, arena? So that fills up. And then there's this area across the other side of Village Road. That can fill up. And then we've got some kind of promotion going on at the adventure center. Where will those cars want to park? Now, at the moment, there's no signage, yes, you would do signage and do other things to help direct people to where they ought to park. But then they're gonna find that, well, what's left now is the dirt park over there. Will they understand that that's a parking area, et cetera, I, you know, we just foresee problems. Go ahead.
Respond to it, I'd like to respond to a number of these points. Um, first, to the point of people see a parking spot that's in a part of the parking lot they don't wanna park in, I mean, I, I don't know how you can say we need to provide additional parking in another location, when people are unwilling to use the parking that's already there, so I'm not quite sure what the logic there is, that we have to build more parking, because they won't use the parking that's there. So that makes no sense. Second of all, with regards to hockey tournaments. The, we do not own or operate the ice arena, we do not operate the hockey academy, we do not sponsor hockey tournaments. The town has a, a parking easement for the ice arena that applies to the east side parking lot, which now consists of seventy-three additional spaces. I would contend that if hockey is creating parking problems, one, if they're not willing to park in the lot across the road, I, that's
Not your problem.
Anything out to do with that, and that's, again, that's a hockey academy issue, it should be raised with the hockey academy to instruct their, their customers about what the parking rules are and where parking is available. Um, if, if hockey is overburdening that parking lot, I would suggest that the hockey academy and/or the town need to address where their overflow parking should go. Because there's no easement for hockey, the ice arena, to use the west side parking lot. It, it happens as a courtesy, and we're happy to cooperate with that. But imposing a requirement on us, when hockey is providing overburdened parking, I would say, what's the hockey academy and the town doing to provide adequate parking for events they are facilitating in their building?
Right, and it, one of the reasons that this matter came up, in fact.
I, I understand that.
Principal reason.
I understand that.
It's not my business, it's not my problem.
Understand that, but the existing parking easement only applies to the to the lot right next to the, the arena, and if they are overburdening additional lots, I would suggest that needs to be addressed by the operators of the hockey tournaments. Where their, their additional parking resources will be located. We can designate overflow parking lots on peak days where, uh, 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 typically, a Saturday is obviously gonna be the peak day for this, this type of facility.
Yep.
We have the conference center parking lot, we have additional parking at the mountain, we can provide a shuttle bus, we have many options to provide. additional parking resources. I would say we could also, if, if you wish to impose additional parking requirements, we can designate a additional parking lot on the plan and say if the parking, they, and we will size that to the number of parking spaces that, that your, 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 your parking analyst uh, designates, I, I, that would be an extension of the east side parking lot area, most likely, so it's close to the facility.
That.
Um, there was an addition, uh, a very rough calculation made at one point based on peak usage of the capacity of the area course, although it was the earlier area course that had higher capacity, that came out with something like a
Hundred seventy-one a day.
For vehicles.
Hundred seventy-one vehicles.
Right, but, but that was throughout the day, that didn't translate to a hundred and seventy-one, it's translated to some number of lower number of parking spots.
Yeah.
We can clear an additional area and create additional parking spaces if you wish to make that a condition of the approval. I, I will still contend that there are many options available to be flexible about parking and that clearing more area and putting down more pavement doesn't, that, that, that detracts from the overall, uh, as, uh, uh, um, a, area to have just more parking lots.
Okay, understood, but it also, it does play into the question that we don't have enough information to decide this. And now that's the, one of the reasons that this contention ca- came up with respect to the select board. I see the select board hand is up, okay, I'm gonna go one, two, three, okay?
Select board in town has mentioned, I'd like to have a comment to answer some of those questions.
Yes.
Hi, uh, David Fever again for the selectmen. There's this expression, right, trust but verify.
Yeah.
And the idea here is, what, the town's not saying the applicant's wrong, the town's not saying there is a sufficient or there are, is not sufficient parking. But in the ordinary course of a project like this, you would have a parking calculation. And what that would, what that would entail is you're looking at the existing parking, you're looking at the use of the existing parking, and there would be a calculation that would provide you with the availability or excess parking. And then you'd have another calculation that, that would calculate the expected parking impacts of the new use.
Yeah.
And then you would reconcile those two. So the concept of asking the applicant to provide a parking calculation would be a reasonable request. And then, when you receive that parking calculation from the applicant, at that point, the towns would have its independent expert review that and make sure that it makes sense, because I can almost promise you that the applicant's expert will tell you that parking is sufficient, so you wanna have a independent, uh, town, a peer review.
Okay, that's what I've been saying.
That's what the selectman would ask, and it's consistent with what you're saying, but it also avoids this debate that seems to be going on. The debate's happening because you don't have the information.
That's right.
Get the information, see what it says, and then you can have a discussion.
Okay, accept that. No, 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 I don't wanna have too many, uh, experts, that is, if the planning board wants an expert to answer its questions, you just mentioned that the town might have an expert to answer its questions, I don't know whether that's applicable.
You meant the town being.
Well, the planning board can, can retain at the applicant's expense, peer review.
Yes.
And that's, that's a pretty standard process. You know, you're gonna have the applicant's gonna say one thing, you're gonna have the peer review say another thing, and then you're gonna rely on your own personal knowledge, like you in fact know that certain times of the year, parking is maxed out, and then based on that evidence, you're gonna make a decision. But I do think a proper parking calculation, not just a site plan that shows the available parking, but parking calculation is really kind of fundamental to something like that.
Okay, then I'm ready to go ahead with that. Counselor.
Yes, thank you. Well, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you keep saying that this board doesn't have enough information to make a decision. You do have enough information to make a decision with an appropriately worded condition. Mr. Sunu suggested several alternatives, your zoning ordinance anticipates just this type of analysis. It doesn't have a set number of spaces per use, this isn't a retail facility, this is something unusual. Your ordinance provides that, uh, for non-residential uses, you're directed to, uh, encourage uh, uh, participation by residents and overnight visitors in your calculation. It provides for flexible parking arrangements. I think working with, uh, the planning board's council and with the Board of Selectmen's Council, this board has sufficient information now to craft an appropriate condition within the sixty-five day limit that protects the town, Laura's looking at me skeptical, but I think we can do it. Because I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking off the top of my head, uh, Laura's very familiar with this, in Concord, uh, there's a process where you, uh, show, as Mr. Sunu suggested, we can show an area on the plans for potential future parking, uh, if needed. Uh, we could provide some security that that would get done, we could provide a process that after a period of time, based on actual experience, where the applicant, uh, prepares a study uh, that may be peer reviewed to analyze the actual usage of this facility after it's been in operations. If it turns out there is a parking problem determined by the experts, we have a reasonable plan in place, whether it's to build more parking, which is not the preferred option, or whether it's some, uh, parking arrangements, busing to accommodate peak demands. So, I, I'm asking this board to not, we understand what you're asking. It's a legitimate question, it's a legit, legitimate question for the town. It's a legitimate question for the Board of Selectmen, they have a shared parking system, we need to work together to accommodate parking, we're all in this for the same goal. Um, again, uh, the resort has no interest in creating a chaotic parking situation for its customers. Uh, but we're trying to get a project done in the most sensible way, and we are against, uh, time limit, that has real-world implications. If this gets postponed until a traffic study is completely, uh, completed and peer reviewed and and considered, uh, we're pushing construction of this up for a whole other year, we're looking at a twenty twenty-seven construction start, or twenty twenty-six construction start and opening in twenty twenty-seven. So there's some real-world consequences, which is, I bring it back to the how you're gonna deliberate over this and reach a decision, you have enough information to make a decision. Laura's skeptical, I think we can work together to come up with a condition that works for everybody, uh, before next Thursday, Friday.
Okay, I respectfully disagree that we have enough information to be able to make this decision. Nonetheless, I'm prepared to look, we don't want this to work out badly, we want it to work out well. So, yeah, you have our cooperation, Laura, I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking about Laura, I'm pointing to Kathy.
Three points, um, as far as, you know, postponing, uh, in, in building, again, that can't be, uh, a consideration for the board because we need to look at what's, what's in front of us, you know, as far as that. Um, as, as far as your building timeframe, which, um, should not be a part of our, our discussion. Um, I'm just concerned what I'm hearing, I, I'm not saying to, that my opinion is, you, you, we don't necessarily need to change the parking, but we don't know, we, you know, one, one says one side, one says the other, we don't know, so, um, and then there's the issue with what's going on with select board as well in relation to parking. So, on those really two points, I would like to make a motion that the planning board requests that a qualified third-party expert conduct a traffic and parking study to determine the traffic, and I'm putting traffic in there, and parking capacity needed to satisfy parking regulations and the demand as determined by the expert. So I got the motion out there. There are seconds?
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Can we discuss?
Discussion.
Um.
So, do we wanna do this, we're to?
I, I wanna say, I, I kept the, we've talked about parking versus traffic, I think that it's, I think it's kind of, because they kinda, I, in my view, they, they go together, I mean, you know, how, how are people coming in Valley Road, are they coming in, you know, that kind of information I would like to have, and as was discussed, like, let's get out in front of it, because if, I would hate for something to happen, and then, then, then we do have problems, and now, you know, we're going back and fixing a problem which maybe we could have gotten out of in front of it by doing this, if that makes sense. So.
Laura, do you have any comment on the motion? That is, are we gonna poke at this traffic business again, or are we just?
I'd like to take a break and chat.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea to me. I hereby call a ten-minute recess to confer with council. That means everybody goes for a walk and gets some fresh air.
Yeah, everybody but the board.
Everybody but the board.